Okay, good evening. Welcome, everybody. I call the June 23 city council meeting to order. Mayor Polly is excused tonight, so I, Council President Walsh, will be serving as mayor pro tem. This meeting is being held one week later than normal due to Shavut, a holiday that occurred earlier in this month. And so as a reminder, we always continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. So both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. We are going to start out. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item of business, we have a special business, which is ID 1882, recognition of Deputy City Clerk Chris Grabowski. Come join me at the... Well, excellent. This is always a bittersweet moment. Chris has been a part of our organization for a while, and, you know, for us at council, we get a lot of interaction with our city clerks. And so it gives us an opportunity to really appreciate all the work that they have done. So Deputy City Clerk Chris Grabowski will be retiring on June 30. And so we just want to take a moment to recognize him and thank him for his service. Chris has been in city work for a while. Started out in the city of Olympia, and in 2001 became their code enforcement officer for the city of Olympia, eventually transitioning to lead code enforcement officer. And one of his achievements there was helping the city draft its marijuana code back in the day. In 2018, he came and joined the city of Issaquah, also in code enforcement. Code enforcement is a really challenging job. It really requires going out and investigating and resolving these complaints. And so Chris was really known for doing it efficiently and with professionalism, which I think was one of the things that when he was looking for a change in November 2021, it became a really good opportunity for him to join the clerk's team. And that was where he, note here, brought his stage management skills and to our city council meetings, so we really appreciate that. As Deputy City Clerk, Chris has helped the city maintain compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act by noticing board and commission meetings and city council agendas. I know we on council have all felt very supported with all of the information that he's been able to bring forth. But behind the scenes, he's also taken on a bunch of special projects, including the development and implementation of the city's cultural and religious holiday calendar, the City Hall Northwest Records Project, and the digitization of the cemetery deed application process. And so those are just a few of the things that you have done since joining this team. But we really just want to take a moment to appreciate that and appreciate all of the work that you've done outside of your day-to-day work on all of the state and regional committees that you have served, including, you just recently got your Certified Municipal Clerk certification from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So we're just really extremely glad that we got you for the last seven years. And just also to thank you for a 30-year period of service to local government. It means a lot. So we wish you all the best in retirement. And would you like to say a few words?
Well, clerks don't, clerks are kind of behind-the-scenes, under-the-radar kind of people, so I'm not going to say a lot, except thank you. Wow, deep dive on the old Instagram there. You guys went back and even the stage management comments. So for those of you that don't know, before I started working in public service, I was an equity stage manager, a union stage manager in Seattle and Vancouver, B.C., Nashville, Tennessee, all over the place. So, but yes, I think those were skills that Tisha was very interested in during the interview process. She was like, "Tell me more about this stage management stuff." And I was like, "Well, I think if I can stage manage a bunch of rowdy actors, I can stage manage a bunch of rowdy city council people." But anyway, thank you. It's been a great, great cap to 30 years. Yeah, thank you.
Well, you'll excuse us, our moment of sentimentality as we just thank someone who has given a lot of service, and we appreciate that. We have one more special business item, which is ID 1893, informational update, the Fourth of July Commission. And so Committee Chair Paul Winterstein, if you'll come to the lectern and give us the information. We appreciate the update.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Paul Winterstein. I'm actually Executive Director of the local Issaquah History Museums, but I'm here tonight as a representative, as was mentioned, chairing the Fourth of July Commission. So I just want to introduce the Commission and the work that we're going to be doing. Our charter as citizen volunteers and with the support of staff is to advise the city on the planning for this year and next celebration for Fourth of July Parade and Celebration. This 2025 event that's coming up is really, this exercise is just a warm-up for planning the country's Independence Day Celebration in 2026, which will be the semi-quintcentennial or 250th anniversary of our country's independence. Nationwide, that is being branded as America 250. So if you haven't heard already, you will be hearing America 250 quite a bit. Now, other volunteers on the Commission with me are Ben Armlin, Missy Armlin, Amanda Bjornson, Frank Garcia, Brenda Spears, and Councilmember Chris Ray. Now, really, we're just advisors. The city and staff are doing most of the work, including Executive Department Coordinator Lindsay Marsh, no surprise, Economic Development Coordinator, freshly minted Jack Pedlow. The city's having no problem keeping Jack busy, I can tell. City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz is helping as well. And Thomas and Naomi from Communications are lending a hand. We're getting support from Parks and the Police Public Works and Eastside Fire and Rescue, of course, will be on hand for the day of the event coming up next Friday. So this, so this year, the Down Home Fourth of July Event is a kids and pets parade on Front Street that'll run south from the intersection of Dogwood and Rainier Boulevard, south to Sunset Way. Immediately following the parade, parade-goers and viewers and all community members are invited to join the community picnic at the city park, which is just south of Sunset, on the west side of the street, opposite the pool. If it's got a name, I don't know the name of that park, but that's where it's located. There will be food trucks there, there will be yard games like cornhole, and there will be music as well. So everyone is invited to join the party. Come grab a meal or bring your own picnic and your blankets and chairs and whatever you would need to enjoy the festivities. So families, organizations, and companies are encouraged to pre-register for the parade beforehand. You can register online on the city website. Pre-registration will make it much easier for the city staff and our volunteers to coordinate and organize this event the morning of. Nevertheless, walk-ups are welcome. Currently, we have organizations such as the VFW 3436. We have a local Cub Scout Pack and some local Tiny Gym and the Little Garden School are already registered. Now, the parade will roll out right at 11:00 a.m., and all who want to be in it have to arrive no later than 10:30 a.m. No later than 10:30 a.m., so get there early, please. We have a grand marshal for this event. This is our local Olympian Kiana Hunter, a Paris 2024 silver medalist in artistic swimming. Kiana will lead the parade riding in a convertible provided for the occasion by Evergreen Ford. Kiana will be hanging around at the community picnic afterwards to greet her old and newest fans. And finally, there will be other volunteers. The Rotary will be, a number of Rotary volunteers will be on hand to assist. And including Councilmember Russell Joe will be emceeing the event. So no matter how much entertainment and fun you get out of the parade, with Russell Joe at hand, with a mic in his hand, will add to the festivities significantly. So that was my briefing. If you had any questions, if none, I'm done.
Counsel, do we have any questions other than being just very entertained and appreciative of you and the committee for all of your work with this planning?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item of business is audience comments. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person, or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. So if you're on the phone, you're going to press star three. If you are on a computer or smartphone, you'll look for the hand icon. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this public, this portion of the meeting. I will also note there is a public hearing on tonight's agenda. That is AB 9006, the 2027-2032 Capital Improvement Plan. So with a public hearing, we try and consolidate all of the comments on a topic like that into one area. So we would ask you to hold that, not in this general comment period, but rather in the public hearing occurring later in the meeting. So Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Okay. For those making comments, you're invited to address council regarding matters that are directly related to ISQAH's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please address your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while we can't directly answer any questions here, we can contact you to follow up if needed, if you provide your information. When recognized, if you're virtually, you'll unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern. You'll press the button, although it looks like it's already pressed. When it turns red, the mic is on. State your name, address, or relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and don't respond, we will have to move on with the meeting, and you're encouraged to join. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. But we do take your public comments very seriously, and so we thank you for taking the time to address us. Clerk, can you identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Alex Zimmerman.
Alex, come on up.
It's working? Thank you. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about problems that I see in Issaquah. For 40 years, what is I live here, I'm in Issaquah probably every week, yes? I live in Bellevue, but yeah, life is life. So my name is Alex Zimmerman. I live here for 40 years. I'm president of Stand Up America. I support Trump from beginning. I have 5,000 times spoken in council chamber. I have 6,000 days of trespass. And Bellevue prosecute me five times, all fake and fraud. What is you can do it? Terrorist is terrorist or fascist. It's not matter. I want to speak about something what is I think in very critical or exactly for people from Issaquah. I don't understand why we include Issaquah, pay 5 plus Doral for gas. Can somebody explain to me? State Washington is only one state who we pay 5 bucks. You understand? Small state like State Washington in Issaquah, small city too. Yeah, we pay more than $5. Don't have sense. I try to understand why it's going on, why another? I don't talk about California because California is not a state. California is a country. Stupid, but country. Yeah, so I try to understand. We small city, you know what it mean? We small state, we pay $5 for gas. But it's not only $5 for gas, but absolutely don't have sense comparable to another state. We pay for last few year almost double for rent. In Issaquah, pay double for rent like everybody in his size. My question right now, how is this possible? What is going on? For last five year, you know what it mean? So we pay double for rent. Can you explain to me? It's only one point, no, a second point. Number three, we pay same price, probably double or triple for food. And the people in Issaquah pay three times or two times more for food. Absolutely don't have sense. And everybody talk, "Yeah, we pay before inflation 25%." Inflation never 25%. It's nothing surprise me, you know what it mean? Because statistic what is come couple weeks ago, and I repeat you before, talk about this. So we right, right now includes Issaquah, people in Issaquah? Yeah, not too much, but yes, yeah. Jump from number one, for five year, jump from number one to number 10. Guys, when system, it's not matter system. Nazi, Gestapo, Democrat, Republican, or people from Mars, fallen by 10 floor down is a collapse. I give you example, German Nazi collapsed from 40 to 45, totally. Yeah, 10 times collapse. Soviet Union collapsed in 91 from 87, real collapse to 91, collapse totally. Collapse is very dangerous. It's exactly what is we have now, yes, here. You don't do nothing about this, and I explain to you why. Because you acting what is, I call them Nazi fascist junta, a bandita, a mafia. It is all control in West East Side, you know what it mean? Because I live here and I speak everywhere, Massey Island, Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland. Right now in Issaquah, I spoke before too. I don't understand why, how is this possible? Can you explain to me? One-party system is always fascism. Fascism what is we have here is absolutely idiotic fascism. And I talk about this many time. You acting more, you more dangerous than fascist, the Nazi or communist. Hitler, for example, Stalin, for example, talking about Nazi. National, you know what it mean? Support Germany, support Soviet Union people, want life better for people. You make life worse, and I don't understand why. Why you doing like a, I call this fascism with idiotic face. Why you doing this? Why people, approximately half million people who live in his size, you know what it mean? Elect Democrat. Can you explain to me? Who can explain to me? People for elect Democrat when they make us life better, but you make life nightmare for last exactly five year. So I speak right now to everybody. Are you all brainwash idiot, a zombie? Why you always support Democrat? Can you explain to me? Maybe this time right now stopping this, you start something doing like a Trump token, you know what it mean? Because Trump is the last chance for us, bring America back. Vive Trump, vive new American revolution. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have anybody else indicating a desire to speak?
No, we have a number of members of the public with us virtually, but no one's indicating a desire to speak.
Okay. Well, we always appreciate commentary. The next item of business is the consent calendar. And the mayor noted that she does not have any remarks on the consent calendar items. Are any of the committee chairs or chair designees, do you have any items on consent? Nope. Okay. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
And they have. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Thank you. I move adoption of the consent agenda as presented, second.
Okay, the motion to approve the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, the next item of business is our public hearing. And so this is AB 9006, the 2027-2032 Capital Improvement Plan. Public hearing on this item was held at the June 9 council meeting. And given that council had a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the CIP on June 16, the hearing was continued until tonight's meeting. So this is a final opportunity for any members of the public to make comments on the proposed CIP. We will then consider taking action under regular business. So I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to make some introductory remarks before we open the hearing.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator. I just plan to keep my remarks fairly short, and they mirror the remarks that I would otherwise make under regular business. So we heard some input from city council at the last committee of the whole last week. The input that we heard was general support for the focus on maintenance for the capital improvement plan. We heard support for upholding past commitments such as Northwest Mammoth Non-Motorized Project. We also had heard feedback on putting Fire Station 71 back into the CIP. Upon further discussion and clarification, we would be looking at what renovations would be appropriate for that facility, and the administration is not ready with that information to come forward at this time. The previous project page on Fire Station 71 was for new construction. And so we still need some time to work with Eastside Fire and Rescue and our facilities professionals to understand what those renovations are and if they meet the capital threshold, which is $50,000. So we have not put that back into the CIP draft. We also heard concerns from council about being able to afford all of the priorities in the CIP and a desire to prioritize some of the projects that are smaller and more quickly implemented over some of these very high-cost, long-term visionary projects. And we heard concerns over the ability to afford those things and complete those projects since funding hasn't been identified. While we heard that feedback from council, we have not taken such projects out of the CIP draft that you see tonight. The reason for that is we wanted to be able to keep some projects in in order to be able to apply for grants and see if we can achieve funding through other means. But I think the feedback that we received from council is very, very valuable for, especially for us prioritizing next year when we start to draft the budget. Because as you know, the CIP is a plan, and the budget is where we go to implement that plan. And that's when we're going to have to make some really tough decisions for what we can actually afford. And so our response would be that during the budget process, we have conversations with council about which of those projects that we should consider trying to fund in certain phases and which of those that we should not fund within that next budget. Because we also heard strong support for Light Rail as well. And Light Rail is also a big and visionary project. So we would like to have the space to have more detailed discussions about specific projects during the budget process. And that is the feedback that we heard from council. Of course, we welcome any feedback from members of the public on any of these items or anything else related to the CIP.
Okay, so with that initial information, I would like to reopen the public hearing at 7:25 p.m. So again, if you're joining us virtually and want to make a comment on this, you can raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. Clerk, has anybody signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think there's any other information I need to ask. Should we start with the first person?
Sure. Alex Zimmerman.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Alex Zimmerman. I live here for 40 years. I'm president of Stand Up America. I support Trump from beginning. I speak in council chamber all over, from Tacoma to Everett, 5,000 times. I have 6,000 days of trespass, 6,000 days of trespass, look like 20 years in jail. And Bellevue prosecute me five times, all five-time fabrication. Three times every, and I will be another 2,000. So I want to speak right now about something what is I think this absolutely hot potato, transportation. Because what is I see here, and I live in many big city in my life, you know what it mean? By definition, Seattle, King County is a small city, took half million. It's not so big, yeah. Comparable to Shanghai, 40 million, for example. Guys, what is happening in transportation in King County is absolutely absurd. It's don't have analogy, I think, in America. I speak about Sound Transit 3, what is cost us now or for another year or two, $200 billion. Can you explain to me what's going on? Why this idiot, you know what it mean? Democrat mafia doing this? What is reason for take $200 billion from the people and spend this in Ponzi scam? Give you example, Bellevue start few months ago, train between Bellevue and Redmond, you know, six miles. Cost probably dozen and dozen billion dollars to train empty 24/7. Nobody uses train. It's no idiot, you know what it mean? Who want use this train when everybody have car? It's okay, no problem. So this Ponzi scam is so interesting. I go to, for example, to Sound Transit Board, they give me three-year trespass. They cannot handle me. So one man come and talking, "So you are Ponzi scam, a criminal. You all supposed to be in jail," you know what it mean? "For $200 million." I start fighting with this. My car, for example, old, my baby, what is I come for 25 year, almost 25 year. Yeah, cost 200 bucks. They charged me for $10,000. I pay $160 for 10-year taxes. So I try go in court, you know what it mean? Seattle Court. In talk to judge, no one judge accept this. You understand about you talking? So definition, this bandita, democratic mafia, Nazi peg, I call him, you know what it mean? What is totally control, two and half million people. I give you another classic example. Seattle, few year ago, build a tunnel. It's cost approximately from 6 to 8 million dollars. It's not matter too much, yeah, who care about this? So right now, this tunnel, you know what it mean? Listen very careful. Depth in every year 300 million. So what is King County last year, and I present every day in King County Council meeting, make decision, so people in King County, include people in Issaquah, you know, will be pays this 300 million depth. Who can be answer me very simple question, what is I don't understand? When my neighborhood, for example, next my house, you know what it mean? Have a fire, I need pay for his fire, for his broken house? Where is problem? So why King County people, 2 million minus 700,000? Seattle idiot, you know what it mean? Why pay for this idiot for this tunnel? Who can answer me this question? Nobody. Why Democrat mafia in King County, you know what it mean? Council did this, why? Can you explain to me? It's have sense? No. This is exactly what has happened all over right now because Democrat don't doing nothing for the people. Corporations number one. Corporations number one, for this I told you, say more dangerous than Nazi or commie, more dangerous, because Nazi, Hitler, for example, want make German happy. Soviet Union Stalin, for example, or communist, my people happy, you know what this mean? Democrat don't have sense. Why they doing this? Corporation make money? If you talking about pure criminality, you know what this mean? Google, Google, Amazon, Microsoft, you know what this mean? Control everything, how is this possible? Can you explain to me? Classic fascism is government together with corporation make a money, control people. We have this. Is this possible after 250 year? Why I come to America 40 year ago, and I fighting for America for all my life? Because I believe in America, a freedom of speech, a common sense, a country so best of the best in this planet. So Trump is last chance, viva Trump, viva new American revolution, wake up freaking idiot, we need something doing. Thank you very much.
So, moving on from that. Let's see. Is anybody else desiring to speak? No? Okay. Fantastic. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Okay. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed at 7:31 PM. Does council have any questions on the capital improvement plan? No questions. Okay. So, we're going to move to regular business, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the CIP.
Thank you. I move to approve resolution number 2025.
Dash 14.
Adopting the capital improvement plan for 2027-2032, including the six-year transportation improvement program.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, thank you. Certainly a challenging time to budget, but also to plan more generally. So also just want to start with a big thank you to staff who have done an outstanding job, given, you know, declining revenues, rising costs, general uncertainty. Thank you for all you've done in this work. As been said, we've prioritized kind of maintenance, while also planning for some of these major construction projects that community have prioritized, like Northwest Mammoth Road, like this important water treatment facility that we need to start planning for. So, and also I want to just call out a big thanks to staff for identifying a path to keep rates as low as possible, looking into the future for our ratepayers. That is huge, given the uncertainty. And then also just building on the comments from Deputy City Administrator around Fire Station 71, she's absolutely right, that page from a previous CIP was about building a new Fire Station 71. We're definitely not there right now, so it makes sense to remove that project and then just to continue to work behind the scenes after the CIP is in front of us, to identify where are those potential things that we could do to make life a little bit easier in that building, recognizing that, like you said, there are some, like the $50,000 rule, so perhaps there are even some small things that don't even need to live in the CIP. So anyways, thank you to staff also for just helping carry that forward as well, and I'll be voting in favor.
Great. Any other comments? Well, I will just echo the thank you. I know this has not been an easy year to try and pull together all of the priorities of the city, and so I think we all appreciate that very much. So if there is no further discussion, the motion before council is to approve resolution number 2025-14, adopting the capital improvement plan for 2027-2032, including the six-year transportation improvement program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. This is a quick round of business. So next item of business is committee and regional reports. Yeah, uh huh. I mean, we have an executive session coming up, but we've got that. So councilmember Jiang.
I have one report from the East Side Transportation Partnership Meeting. So we had a meeting on Friday, June 13th, at Redmond City Hall in person. It was great to see everyone in person, and it was actually my first in-person meeting with this group, so it was good to meet everyone. So the main items that we had were, first, we shared all the cities' shared priorities and concerns related to federal funding. A staffer from Congresswoman Susan Del Bennett's office was there to, you know, take notes and bring it back to DC, which was great. And we heard a presentation from WashDOT on the Virtual Coordination Center, which coordinates responses to transportation incidents across a wide array of agencies. So it was interesting to learn about how they kind of coordinate that across all the different local agencies, statewide agencies, et cetera. And the next East Side Transportation Partnership Meeting is on July 11th. And that's it. Oh, yeah.
Excellent. Next, councilmember Joe.
Thank you. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will be holding their next meeting on June 25th. Additional information is on the website. Chamber of Commerce Board meeting was canceled, so we didn't have that one in June. We'll look forward to the next one in July. The Mobility Infrastructure Meeting, the next one will be July 15th, and councilmember Ray will give a summary of the meeting in June. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
I have three reports, one longer one and two quick ones. First, for Planning Development and Environment Committee, we last met on June 10th. Our only item on the agenda was COME 0108, which was our Title 18 policy amendments. There are kind of three buckets here. The first bucket was minor amendments, very similar to the clarifying amendments that we passed a few weeks ago. Bucket two was some state required amendments, things like allowing co-living housing in certain zones, allowing easier conversion of commercial and multi-use spaces to multifamily use, and then some other technical changes around electric vehicle charging infrastructure and parking requirements for affordable housing. And then bucket three was the policy amendments. These were kind of policy considerations that came up from code users actually using the code, mostly to do with kind of wayfinding signage, heat pump installation and noise control, some changes around roosters and chickens and beekeeping, and applying a more urban code as opposed to King County's code, which is really better suited to rural settings. And then also looking at the question of common and private amenity space that was brought up actually during our last TOD touch as a council a few weeks ago, in adding that same deviation process into code that we used there. So we agreed with PPC and the staff recommendations on all those amendments, and we also expressed some interest in having a broader discussion on kind of the step back in the amenity space questions that came up during that TOD discussion, looking at those as potential barriers to housing development here in town, and having kind of a priority setting conversation as a full council, recognizing that CPD has a lot on their plate right now with very few staff, or very few planners. So if we want to have kind of that community conversation and take this up as a council, we'd need to then kind of look at the work plan and potentially make some changes. So anyways, that's just a little preview of that kind of trade-off discussion that we will have when this item comes back in July. I think so, right? July at a council meeting, okay. And then our next meeting is July 8th, and on the agenda is COME 0142, Bellevue College Development Agreement Extension Request, and COME 0156, Impact and Mitigation Fee Update. So that's that one. I have not given a RIA 8 Salmon Recovery Council update in a long time. RIA 8, for those listening in, is the Water Resource Inventory Area. 8 is the technical name of our watershed here in our area. The next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council is July 17th, and it's going to be right here in Issaquah. Our very own Alan Quinn from Public Works is going to be giving a presentation on our habitat restoration work and stormwater management strategies, and then we're all going to get on a bus and go over to Lake Smamish State Park and get a tour of the Lower Issaquah Creek Restoration Project in the state park, so that'll be fun. Last, just a quick update on EFOR, on East Side Fire and Rescue. I should have a few updates for you all on fire chief recruitment at our next regular council meeting. We have concluded stakeholder ring and candidate profile development in the salary range setting. And the next phase, which now is advertising and recruitment, starts in early July, so stay tuned on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As councilmember Joe mentioned, I will be doing the Mobility Infrastructure Committee Report. The committee met on June 17th. There were two items on the agenda. One was COME 0119, the utility rate study, the rate design and general facilities charges. We received an update on GFCs. We had an interesting discussion about the impact of the, on missing middle housing and ADUs of a higher GFC charge. The committee provided feedback on the proposed changes, or charges, and these will be included in the final rate study results that the committee will be reviewing in total in the near future. We also heard an update on COME 0138, which is the Central Issaquah Multimodal I-90 Crossing Study Update, and we received an update on the crossing. We reviewed alternative crossing sites, with the committee supporting the administration's recommendation for an 11th Avenue to 11th Avenue multimodal overcrossing. The committee had a robust discussion on next steps, and we agreed with the administration's suggestion to bring the topic back to the MNI committee for further discussion related to the overcrossing at a subsequent committee meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee did meet Wednesday, June 11th, from 7 to 9 PM in a virtual meeting. Executive Director Feldstein had a presentation on feedback from municipalities on kind of reigniting the PIC, and it really comes back to getting back to PIC's roots, which is as a policy advisory board for the Board of, the SCA Board of Directors, and getting back to regular meetings with King County Executive, which have been reinstituted. So we're very excited to see where that takes us. There were no other actions taken at the SCA PIC meeting, however. And then this month, the Services Safety and Parks meeting for the month is canceled, so I will wander around aimlessly tomorrow night rather than being here dealing with services, safety and parks issues. But hopefully we'll be back to, you know, high action shortly. Thank you. That concludes my report.
We will work on that for you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President De Michelle?
Thank you. So on June 18th, I attended the Board of Health meeting, and we received a report on infant mortality in King County. King County's rate of infant mortality is currently 4.3 deaths per 1,000 live births. That is lower than Washington State and significantly lower than United States rate. However, there has been an uptick locally over the past two years that is worrisome if it continues. It is also important to note that poor and marginalized communities have significantly higher infant mortality rates, particularly indigenous populations, and those communities have been receiving significant maternal healthcare resources through King County. Those are now threatened by the proposed federal cuts to healthcare funding. Today, received a email from Teresa Mosqueta, who is the Chair of the Board of Health, and the King County Council passed a resolution opposing the cuts that are being proposed at the federal level to healthcare, specifically Medicaid funding. So, so King County is working on advocating against those proposed cuts. Also on June 18th, there was a Regional Transit Committee meeting, and that featured a panel presentation for, most of the meeting was devoted to the topic of transportation and mobility plans for the FIFA World Cup in 2026. I have slides from that meeting, and I will send those to everybody so you can go through. It was an extensive presentation, you know, multiple, multiple factors being considered. We had a robust discussion from the Sound Cities Association representatives at the Regional Transit Committee, lots of interest in what is happening, but, yeah, it is so complex that it's, it is an amazing production that they're going through right now. So it was quite fascinating. And that ends my report.
I have no report this evening, and the mayor has no report this evening, so the next item of business is good of the order. Does anybody have any good of the order items? Okay. Then I'll just note upcoming council meetings. There will be a regular council meeting on Monday, July 7th. This is one week later than normal due to the 4th of July holiday. Anticipated agenda items include the Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center, or TODOC, Housing Cooperation Agreement, and the Policy for Naming Public Facilities and Parks. The City Council Retreat, I will remind you, is on Saturday, July 12th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, is going to be held at the King County Library System Service Center. So they've reopened that, and we will be able to go there. We will be sending out a memo for you, trying to get that out before the 4th of July so that you have a little bit of time to prepare for all of those items. And then there is an executive session tonight to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per N I. This item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow an open session. So we will now go into executive session. Do we want to take a break, or are we good to move through? Drive right through. I got it. We'll go into executive session at 7:46 PM. Okay. We are back in open session at 8:04 PM. Is there a motion?
Thank you. I move to authorize the City Administrator to execute a separation agreement as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay. Is there any council discussion? If there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to authorize the City Administrator to execute a separation agreement as discussed in executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:05 PM. Thank you.